Welcome. It's Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. The Tuilla City Council Redevelopment Agency of Tuilla City are meeting in a work meeting that's being held at Tuilla City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady and I'm present. Item three is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Excited to be here tonight. The first thing I would like to do is congratulate our -- the elections are over and I am just very thrilled to have Dave continue on with us and John, and he's here somewhere. He is right there. John's here tonight, so we're excited to have him join the team. And congratulations to Marissa. It's been just a great day today, so we're thrilled. The other items, I just wanted to -- and some of you might mention these because you've attended. We've had a couple more ribbon cuttings, and one was for Salt Flats Psychiatry, and that is run by Renee Lovelace, who is -- that's her business, and she is a local person. We love it when the small businesses open up in our community. And then yesterday, we had a ribbon cutting for Bombay Kitchen. So they are located down in the little shopping center where Panda Express is and Cafe Rio in that area. And I will just tell you, I was brave because I had never had Indian food. I just have not had the opportunity, you know? We didn't have anything. So it was just really, really fun to go there because they said, hey, try -- come and try this. It is so good. It will be a place that I will visit often, so I was just very grateful. They were a great hosts for us that -- yesterday with all of us, and it was a fun ribbon cutting. So we're just excited to continue to see new business come here to the city. So that's my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the council members' report. We'll start with Councilman McCall.
I would just echo what the mayor said because we have done quite a few ribbon cuttings lately, and that's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I know I've done more, but...
It's hard to keep track.
It is.
Councilman Hanson.
I just figured you was thinking too much about the election. Congratulations to all of you. Looking forward to the changes and the good, and so it'll be great. And mayor win. You know we're going to miss you in 50, 60 days, I think you said, but yeah.
I'm going to miss you, too. I'm going to miss you, too. I'll be sitting down there in public seats.
Telling us what to do. Yeah, okay, all right. And went to lots of little things, but I can't remember what they are, so I'm going to tell you later, okay? We've been busy, though. So anyway, good to be here tonight.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Thank you, Chairman. I, too, would like to congratulate those that participated in the election. It's hard to campaign, and so I just want to congratulate everybody that participated, and for those that win, I'm looking forward to serving with them. It was really exciting. We had an exciting day in October the 23rd. We had a ribbon cutting for England Dancers and the Wigwam. So just a shout out to Darwin Cook and the Parks and Rec Department. They've done a beautiful job. That facility will be there for people to enjoy for 100 years. And so we're just so excited. The Wigwam has more exciting things that are coming, but it is a beautiful facility and a lot of opportunity for our citizens to recreate. On the 28th, we went -- attended a waste management tour and to see how our garbage is recycled, and it was fascinating. Our garbage does not just go to the landfill. It is sorted through a recycling plant, and the recycling is so fine that it separates out the plastic milk jugs and the pop bottles and -- or tin cans for pop. It was fascinating. They do a fabulous job, and it's so good for our economy, and it is sold to consumers that benefit from this waste. So I encourage everyone to participate in recycling. On the 29th, Marissa and I attended the Ivory Price Summit, and that was a national conference in Salt Lake at the University of Utah. It was fascinating. They actually printed a book that Marissa grabbed and shared with our other council members on low-cost, high-impact housing solutions. And so we're grateful to be a part of the solution and for everything that's been accomplished here. Hats off to all of our department heads. So that concludes my report. Oh, also, I just should say, I did participate in the county election. I was a poll worker, and so I got to be on the other side of the counter. And that is hard work. So I just want you to know that there are volunteers that serve in our community that help with this, that care about the decisions that are made, and I just encourage everybody to be an informed voter and congratulate Tracy Shaw for being our county clerk and for all the work that she does. So there. Now I'm concluding my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manzio.
Sure. I also need to just express appreciation to the voters of the community. We have a great community, and I'm happy to be able to serve. I have big shoes to fill, but I'm excited. And I think everything else that everybody has said, I've done the same things. But I can't give enough of a shout out to the Waste Management Tour. It was really fascinating. It's amazing how they separate all that recycling out. And the first question we asked was, does all of our recycling go to the landfill? And it does not. I have pictures. Doesn't go there. So I echo that as well, but that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. I attended many of those same events. The Waste Management Recycling Tour was truly amazing, and the parks, the Wigwam Park, I hadn't been there for probably a year or so, and then it's a complete transformation. It's a hidden gem now, so nice work to the Parks Department. I had a council on aging meeting. I just like to tell all of the elderly people out there that there's plenty of help if you have questions about Medicare or go to the senior center. The senior center, and they can answer your questions. There's a lot of resources that the county has. And then the North Tuilla Special Service District is doing very well. They're getting ready for winter, so they do really well with keeping that area on the north end of town looking really nice. That concludes my report. We will move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a discussion on a proposed land use map amendment and a proposed zoning map amendment request for approximately 38 acres located at approximately 900 South Main Street to reassign 10 acres to the high-density residential land use designation and to rezone 38 acres to the MR8 PUD, multifamily residential, and R17 PUD residential zoning districts, and to establish the standards of the One O'Clock Hill PUD. This is presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the city council. I appreciate this opportunity to take some of your time tonight to present this fairly complex land use application request. You're probably familiar with this property. It is the 38 acres that are highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. I should state that that is not the entirety of the applicant's property. They actually own considerably more of the land to the southeast of the property highlighted in red. However, the property in red is the area that has any development potential. The rest of the property is largely undeveloped due to slope and geologic issues related to that mountain. You've probably seen -- you're probably familiar with this property. It came before you about four years ago for a zoning map amendment, which at the time was rezoned to R17. Since then, since the approval of that R17 zoning, the applicant -- or previous applicant submitted a preliminary subdivision application to subdivide the property into, I believe, 178 single-family residential lots. That was approved by the Planning Commission. They then submitted a final plat for about 10 lots that would front on to direct -- front directly onto Settlement Canyon Road. That application went through the process but was never formally recorded, and since then, the application has since expired. The property has been on the market for sale. The previous applicant's no longer involved. We have a new applicant that wants to revisit the development proposal on the property. And so they've submitted two applications for the council's consideration. The first application -- well, excuse me. I go to this slide. The entire property, as you can see, is zoned R17. There is a handful of various zoning around the property. You have MU160 and RR1 to the southeast. Those properties are owned by the applicant. We have R112 to the east, and then some R17 and general commercial to the north, with a pocket of MR12 to the southwest. And then there is about a five-acre piece of RR1 that is surrounded by the subject property that is not part of this application. In order to facilitate a zoning change, we must first make sure that the land use map complies with or will comply with the zoning map. The applicant's intentions for the property are to construct small-lot cottage, single-family homes and townhouses. And in order to build townhouses, you have to have an MR zoning district. In order to qualify for an MR zoning district, you have to have the right land use designation. So the land use map amendment request affects only about 10 acres of property as highlighted on the current land use map. The 10 acres are currently designated as medium-density residential, which is a land use designation that requires R17, R1A, or R110 zoning districts, which is single-family zoning. In order to do townhouses, you have to have an MR zone. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to change the 10 acres of this property from MDR to HDR. HDR is what we call high-density residential. HDR requires MR8, MR12, MR16, or MR20 zoning districts. In the MR zones, you can construct townhouses. So that is the first application that they are requesting, is to change the land use designation of that 10 acres in order to facilitate a zoning map amendment for a zone that would permit townhouses. And if I lose any of you, please raise your hand or throw something at me because it's a complicated application. This is a concept plan that was provided by the applicant. The purple area is the area that would include the townhouses if the zoning amendment and land use map amendment were to be approved. This is a concept plan. It has not been reviewed by staff or conformist to any ordinances, but this is their intention with the property. The large, bold orange line is a trail that they are proposing with the site. The zoning map amendment is a little more expansive than just the land use map amendment, so again, if I lose you in this explanation, please stop me. You'll note that on the zoning map, the proposed zoning would be for MR8 PUD and R17 PUD. The MR8 PUD is the townhouse portion, and then the remaining would be the R17 PUD. In case you aren't familiar with a PUD and what it is, our ordinance permits planned unit developments. And the purpose of the PUD ordinance is to facilitate kind of a clustering type of development wherein a park or open space is desired. So if an applicant comes in and they want to build a park, the council can attach PUD to the zoning, which would enable a reduction in design standards, such as building setbacks or lot width or minimum lot sizes. Doesn't affect the density. It doesn't affect the land use, but it would allow a little more clustering of residential properties in order to facilitate open space elsewhere. The applicant's asking for the PUD in exchange for the trail system. They have also mentioned a perpetual conservation easement in favor of Tuilla City on the balance of their property in exchange for the PUD specifications. Now, in order -- the ordinance says that the PUD should only be granted when there is a significant public benefit in granting the PUD. Now, whether or not the trail or the conservation easement is sufficient to qualify for the PUD, that's up to the city council to decide. But that is one -- those are two things the applicant is proposing. And I should state, the applicant is here tonight. If the council would like to hear his presentation, that, of course, is at your discretion, so...
What is the conservation easement? Do you have a description of what that is?
A conservation easement is just an easement placed over the property that prohibits development, so it would remain perpetually as open space. Now, whether or not it maintains -- whether or not it stays into the ownership of the current property owner or most of the city, I don't know about that. That's up to the developer, but an easement would prohibit development and just maintain it as open space, so...
Andrew?
Oh, go ahead.
Is the trail not -- the trail was required as part of the rezone?
It was required as part of the previous rezone. That, if they were to develop as R17 now, they would have to put the trail in. I would suggest that as part of the PUD, we also include that as part of the zoning.
Okay.
Andrea, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Thanks for going back to the map. Could you tell us the amount of property that they are considering putting in a conservation easement, and can you show us where it is on the map?
So the overall acreage of the property, I believe, is 178 acres, minus the 38 for the development. You'd be looking at around, I don't know, 140 acres. That would be in a conservation easement. It's basically everything that's listed as MU160, and then the RR1 located just to the north of the MU160. So all that property that you see there is currently under the ownership of the applicant and could end up in a conservation easement.
Okay, so that's essentially the mountain site?
Yeah, it's all One O'Clock Mountain and possibly Two O'Clock. Yeah, it's quite a bit.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just wanted to go over the PUD request. The R17, the applicant's -- the ordinance requires that the applicant put together the PUD standards, and then we present those to the city council, and you decide whether or not you want to accept those. Some of the changes for the R17 in order to facilitate the clustering and the cottage home type of use, they are requesting a reduction in lot size to 3,500 square feet from 7,000 square feet, which is what's currently required in the R17. They're also requiring a minimum lot width at front setback, a requesting from 60 feet to 40 feet. They're requesting a reduction in the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 15, and a reduction in the side yard setback from six feet to five feet. And then lot coverage would change from 35% to 31%, and then a slight reduction in minimum dwelling size from 1,125 square feet to 1,000 square feet. Again, this is to facilitate kind of a clustering situation. It does not change or alter the maximum densities and so forth they can have on the property. And then they provided some images that demonstrate the types of homes that they would like to construct on those smaller cottage-style lots. They're also requesting some PUD standards for the MR8. There aren't as many variations to the MR8 zoning ordinance, however, they are requesting a reduction in lot width from 35 feet to 20 feet, and then a reduction in interior or rear yard setbacks from 25 feet. This graphic shows 12 and 1/2 feet. You'll note that in your ordinance, it's actually 12 feet. Matt Johnson and I discussed the -- it'd be better just to have 12 feet rather than try and measure 12 and 1/2 feet in the field if this was to be approved. And then the side yard reduction from six feet to five feet, and lot coverage of 62% instead of 35%, and then no change in the dwelling size. The applicant's also requesting that the PUD includes some changes to the architectural standards, namely the 40% brick requirement on the front facade. They're requesting that the PUD permits stucco, fiber cement, siding, and wood in addition to the brick and stone requirement we currently have, and then a similar requirement for the single-family residential portion. So that is the breadth of the application. There's quite a bit there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you. As I mentioned, the applicant is also here. Would like to do a presentation if the council's willing, so...
So the total units that they're recommending is 261, is what I calculated from their information in the packet?
Yeah, if all of this were to be approved, and if the proposals meet all of the qualifications of their PUD, that could be the unit count.
Okay. And I have the -- the current zoning would permit 134 single un -- R17 single-unit houses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so if we was to approve an MR8, can we just do just an MR8, or does it have to be in the high-density housing? The MR, you know, we had this discussion before.
Yeah, the MR8...
Because of the 12, 16, and 20, or whatever, so can we just do just MR8?
The MR8 has to have the high-density land use designation, but you could do the MR8 without the PUD. You don't have to approve the PUD. And if there's something else that you would like to see to facilitate the PUD, by all means, you can negotiate on that and make that a qualification of approving it. You're not obligated to approve the PUD as it's currently presented. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
I have a quick question. On, could you put the map back up, the one that showed the eight acres, I think it is? Now, where, if I'm not mistaken, to the south of that purple, isn't that where there's homes already?
To the southwest. So if you look just to the left of the screen, there's five homes in there. They're on half-acre lots.
Right.
Yep, they're right next to it.
And they're proposing to put high-density housing right beside them?
Yes.
I was just wondering about that, if I was actually saying that correctly.
Yes, you are correct. I should also point out that the previous application provided various studies in regards to seismic issues there, rockfall hazards, drainage issues, and so forth. Those studies have all been done. The previous development made sure that their application complied with the recommendations of those studies. Those studies would have application to this development as well. The ground is still the same as it was back then, so we're confident that those studies will address a lot of those issues.
Okay, are there any other questions for Andrew? Okay, if the developer has a -- or the applicant has something they want to present, support that.
Good evening, council members. My name's Jason Bull. I'm an urban planner with Snell &amp; Womer, and I am here with the property owner, the applicant. And we're grateful for your time this evening and to be able to talk about this application. Some of you, we've met with several times. I recognize you from the Planning Commission meeting. We had a DRC meeting back in June. And so this has been a -- an ongoing process, an iterative process, where we've met with the city, taken feedback, and modified and adjusted things. And I -- so I think even from what we heard from Planning Commission, I think there's an opportunity to expand upon what it is we shared with Planning Commission and hopefully present a better project. Let me make sure. Maybe I can skip through some of these. So just to -- this is the previous plat approval. So there was a trail that was required as part of this plat approval. I don't know if I can zoom in. Along that would be the southeasterly boundary. But if you look at this, you'll notice that, maybe if I stop touching it, there really isn't any open space. It's a matter of subdividing out all of the property into lots. As we've looked at the market, I think the climate, what we're hearing from state leaders, local leaders, housing is a priority. Reevaluated the project and the property, as well as reviewing the information that was done when this previous plat was approved. And what I think what we've come up with is a much better project, a much better product to present to you from what was previously approved with just the single-family homes. So the impetus, there's several things that are accomplished in this revised plan. I think that may not be very clear if just looking at the plans. One of the things is the ability to move the development away from the hillside. We heard that through the previous process, the concerns with the rockfall study that was done. And so the ability to move away from the hillside, we thought, was a good move and advantageous. The other things that, and you can't really, I apologize, you can't really see so well on this map, the inclusion of additional amenity areas. So not only do we have that trail, but then there's also these amenity areas, these park areas, and I have another plan. We can go into depth, a little more depth on these, that would be available for those uses of the trail. Additionally, there's the opportunity for the conservation easement. And so we had floated the idea with Planning Commission. Planning Commission seemed receptive. I think what we're depicting on here is, I think, what we intended to propose as the conservation easement, as going along the ridge line. And I can show you about it's -- so 70, 74 acres in the conservation easement. It's double of the development property down there on the bottom. And just real quickly, the density, so we kind of had this conversation with the Planning Commission about what the density is, and if it's high density, what's appropriate. To understand the overall project, the density we're looking at is 1.44 units per acre. It is a really low-dense project. It may be clustered, but overall, looking at the property, it is a low-dense project compared to those categories in the general plan. So this is kind of a 3D depiction to understand what that conservation, where that conservation easement is and what it would provide, is protecting the One O'Clock Hill, providing that hillside, and putting it in a perpetual conservation easement. You know, and we're open to, you know, I guess, the negotiation, the understanding of whether or not the trail, if we want to move that conservation easement down so that the trail's included, some of these amenity areas, you know, there's, I think, lots of options to make it work, to make it the best option for the city when it comes to how this conservation easement can work. Real quickly, so at Planning Commission, we heard several concerns, and we feel that we've been responsive to those. One of the things was parking. We actually have reduced the count of the units. We're at 257 in order to accommodate additional amenity area as well as some guest parking area. That was a concern that the Planning Commission expressed, was the ability for people, obviously the homes would meet the parking standards with the garage and the driveway, but then having the guest parking as well. Also, there were questions about, I'm going to try to zoom in here, about the amenity areas and how large they were and what they would include. So to give you an example, this one on the north side of the road, those are two pickleball courts, as well as a tot lot that we would propose in the amenity areas. And there's lots of flexibility in where these facilities could go throughout the property because we are providing that additional green space then, which doesn't exist with the prior approval. So there's some pavilions in there as well, and then additional, oops, I apologize, trying to navigate, additional tot lot areas, you know, potential areas available further south on the property as well. Additionally, some of the other concerns that we heard, I'm going to skip through here fairly quickly. So some of the slides at the end. We understand that some of the other concerns we heard were, I guess this is a zoom in of the amenity areas. There was quite a bit of talk at Planning Commission about the wildlife. I was curious. I went to the Utah's Department of Wildlife Resources, looked at their wildlife habitat maps, and where there's mule deer and elk wintering habitat. And it is, it is on that hillside. And I think one of the things that we're proposing is to put that conservation easement in the areas that's been identified as habitat in order to preserve those areas. Additionally, at the Planning Commission, safety was talked about and safety along the highway. We are proposing, we would propose to put... We are proposing, we would propose to put a precast wall, a decorative precast wall along the, the highway in order to, for safety concerns, as well as for aesthetic concerns, and making sure that it, it is decorative. So traffic was talked about. We do have a traffic study that supports the ability to, for this development, and, uh-oh, I may have lost it. So understanding that traffic is a concern, we did align the, the access points with the access points across the highway in order, as, as required, and have gone through UDOT and worked with UDOT on getting that access, the access approved. Additionally, one of the changes that we've made, thank you, that we're proposing as opposed to the previous approval is including, let me get back to a site plan. I might have to go all the way back up to the front. Including a, an easement for future access on the southern end of the property, so that as the property to the south develops, there's the ability to connect with the roadway system as well as the trail system is available on that southern end as well for future development. All in all, we feel we've been very thoughtful and responsive. Oh, I guess one, one additional thing. For those of you that may have been in that DRC meeting in June, the, the initial proposal was to propose townhomes, majority of townhomes, in fact exclusively of townhomes. One of the things that we heard in that meeting was a preference for multiple unit types in order to break up the subdivision, in order to create more of a community feel, to have multiple opportunities, multiple units, unit types for sale. And so that's really what our proposal, one of the modifications that we made early on was to include a smaller portion of townhomes in the central area, and then these cottage homes to the north and to the south. And, and to be clear, you know, Planning Commission asked this question, these are for-sale units, these are intended for homeownership, is what these, these units are, are for, both the townhomes and the cottage lots. We have been working with home builders to understand their needs and what it would take to actually build this project, and that's where a, a lot of the changes have come from, and a lot of the suggestions in our proposal comes from, is making sure we have a project that can be built, that will provide entry-level homeownership options, and a variety of, of options here, here in the community. So with that, I'm happy, we're happy to answer any questions. I don't know if, if you have any questions from that presentation or from, from what you've read, but we're happy to add any clarification that we can and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments?
The two hundred and fifty-seven units are going to be on the forty-eight acres, correct?
It's less than forty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think it's misleading to say that the, it's one unit per acre because they're so bunched together. It's more like five to six units per acre if you calculate it. So I think it is misleading to say that your density is low, because your density is not low, because most of it is unbuildable. You're not going to be building up the, the mountainside. So I think that's misleading to say that you, you do have a lower density than it really is, and it's significantly lower than you're saying than reality. So I, I was on the council when this was rezoned to an R-17. At that time, there was a lot of discussion from residents. They didn't want it zoned R-17 either. There was pushback when that came about. I supported it because I thought the trail, I, I thought it was an appropriate place for some houses, but I think your density is way too high. Right now, it could be zoned for a hundred and thirty-four units. I think that's more appropriate rather than being in the two fifty-seven range. So I don't support this. I have same concerns about traffic. Most high-density areas that we have, we have a lot of parking issues. And you can drive around Tuilla and you can see that. Go to apartments in town, townhomes, the parking overflows all the time onto the accessory streets. With the accessory street being a state road, that would be a nightmare if we had anyone parking there. Those are my biggest concerns. You talk about more development to the south, that's not Tuilla City, so the, the, the chances of that happening, future development, unless that gets annexed into Tuilla City, I don't see that happening either. So leaving that area for future access easement, I think, is unrealistic. I don't think that will be developed anytime soon, so. Those are my points I wanted to hit on. Anyone else?
I have the same concerns, and I was in the pre-development meeting, and I think I expressed my concerns then. I thought it, I think it's too much, it's not the appropriate place. I think this is a beautiful development, I don't think it's the appropriate place for it. And I have received several letters from residents expressing that same sentiment. Again, they weren't happy about the R-17, but I think it is a good place for some houses, just not this, not this.
I think, I think I agree with you guys, but I was looking at this, and the reason I asked the question a minute ago about the high-density, basically apartments are, I'm assuming they're going to be apartments, the high-density, it's just going to be...
Townhomes.
Okay. For some reason, I was thinking it was going to be apartments or something. But I was concerned about that, and I know we would have to have a stoplight. Have you talked to UDOT at all about a stoplight? Because, I mean, it, it's only fair, at Coleman, getting into this, you would, you would have to have a stoplight. Or at certain times of day, no one will be able to get in and out of there. And Settlement Canyon Road, I don't know what that will be, but that is not the perfect road as it is right now, to get off of thirty-six to go up Settlement Canyon, which is the one on the, on the north. That would be another nightmare. I mean, and I don't know if you're familiar with going up there on the weekends or whatever, up to the reservoir, but it, it can be hectic. And with this amount of housing, that would be totally bad.
My, my thoughts, I just, you know, the number you came up with of about half of what your density is, is something more that I would consider, too. I wouldn't, I'm not good with two sixty-four on, two fifty-seven on, on that acreage, so. Yeah, it's just a lot right in that spot, you know? If it was spread between there and a hundred and seventy-two acres on, you know, that had all the property, that would be different. So, anyway.
Mr. Chair. I, I appreciate everybody's comments. I did have a concern for high-density in this area. I agree that this is a, a nice product. I don't feel like it's a good location. High-density really needs to be located to shopping and opportunities for our residents to be walkable. I see no access across that SR thirty-six to make this a walkable area into any shopping areas within maybe one to two miles for walkability. I, I'm concerned for the safety hazards. I, I was concerned even for the hundred and thirty-four homes that will be there. And to put the, the sensitive overlay, or not the overlay, but the PUD, yeah, the conservation easement, is there a need to do that? Because, you know, I don't think you can do anything with it, but let those deer and elk habitat there. I don't think there's any other option. There really aren't trails for hiking, you know, people hike up in Settlement Canyon. But also, pickleball courts and tot lots probably require an HOA to maintain those amenities. Were they, was that a plan for, for an HOA for that development?
Yes.
Okay. And those are, those are my concerns, safety and density. I just don't think it's a good location for it.
Yeah.
So, one question I have is, are the concerns you're bringing up, is it more about the townhomes, or is it about the single-family cottage, the smaller, single-family dwellings that are more affordable for purchase?
For me, it's a little bit of both. It's mostly involving the density. So I would be a hard no on any multifamily there, but there are just too many, too many units there.
So if we were to look at cottage units, which ours do fit the zoning but would need a PUD, I'm not sure if you saw those images, what those look like. They're just, they're a lot smaller, single-family dwelling, that makes it so it's a lot more affordable for people these days to buy a home, so. Okay.
It depends on how many there are.
Yeah, and, and I would be concerned about the, the cost, because I know, we, we hear this all the time about affordability, and we know what the median home price in Tuilla County is right now. So how would these homes compare as far as one of these cottage-type homes?
I mean, they would definitely be on the lower end because they're, they're going to be smaller, and so I don't, I couldn't tell you how they would compare to the median price, but they would definitely be a, a lower-priced home because simply they're just simply smaller.
Less than three?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to say, because I don't, I don't know for sure, but, I mean, they're going to be on the lower end just because of their size, and the, the cost to build is going to be less expensive, too.
You had mentioned that these are, the plan is to sell these as owners, like, but not rentals. How do you guarantee that? We've had other developers who come and tell us that same thing, and the next thing we know, the, the whole subdivision is, is rentals. This happened on Vine Street, Vallowan Vine, that was supposed to be owner-occupied. Every single one of them is a rental. So to say that, how do you guarantee that that happens?
I mean, I believe there are things you can put on the ground in the, on title to restrict that, but the builders we're, we're working with, none of them are for-rent product. This, for-rent product is generally mostly townhomes. A cottage is, is not typically a, a for-rent product, just because it's too hard to manage and it's just not cost-effective. So it's not possible. I mean, there, I'm sure there are probably people out there that do that, maybe, but the groups we're working with, they're all for-sell by owner, or to, to sell.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? This will be on our business meeting tonight for a vote, so.
Yeah, and I guess, just real quickly, we appreciate your comments, and apologize if it seems it's misleading on the density. It's, it's a math equation, the acreage and the units, and this is typically how it's calculated, but we, we understand your concern in hearing what, hearing what you're saying. And I guess with that, that feedback, I mean, if, I guess we would request that you give us the opportunity to take that feedback and see what we could do. We're, we'd like to hear the public comment, but maybe postponing the vote until we have the opportunity to, to respond to, to the comments that you've provided is, is something we'd, we'd like to ask.
Okay.
So for you to consider.
Do you, with that, though, are you willing, I'm not comfortable going above a hundred and thirty-four units, or whatever the current zoning is. So that's a hard stop for me. I think it's zoned-appropriate. Even with the PUD, it seems like you want to increase the amount of units. I disagree with you so much about the mathematical equation. Mathematically, why would we consider an area, a hundred and seventy-eight acres, when that, you're not building there? Why, mathematically, why would I include that into my equation about the density of it? So mathematically, I think it was very deceptive to do that, to try to say this is a low-zoning project when it's not at all. It's a high-density project in an area where it shouldn't be done. So to me, mathematically, it, it doesn't make sense to put more unit, more units there. Mathematically, we use the wrong equation to determine the density, so.
What's done in other projects that I've seen is they will take, they'll call it clustering. And so even if you can't build on it, like in areas where there's wetlands and things like that, they will consider that open space or green space. But when they do the calculation, they actually, they do account for the entire acreage, even though it's not buildable, because then it accounts for your green and your open space.
I understand, every developer does this, but it's not accurate. It's, I, I dislike it so much, and that's why I'm on my soapbox right now, because I think it's wrong to do that. We've had developers in Overlake who tell us that there's this open space, it's not usable open space. Is that really open space? It's green space, it looks nice, but all we do is water this grass area, and no one uses it. So same thing here, this is a hillside, no one's going up that hillside, it's rocks, it shouldn't be included in it, so. And I think it's, it's an open space area already, like, I know it's the MU ones...
Well, it's MU one sixty, so unless we had a land use amendment to change that, it's already open space.
Yeah. So, and to be fair, Planning Commission, it was talked about how there was a restaurant, I guess, proposed or potentially proposed at the top.
Yeah, one o'clock restaurant, never going to happen.
The day that happens. Anyways, I'm down on my soapbox, so.
Yeah, so we just asked that, let's take some of your comments and public comment and go back to the table and come back.
Are you willing to keep the units at that low of a number, though? Because it seems like it's not going to pencil out for you if...
Well, we're not going to be able to determine that tonight. That's, and that's why we're asking to give us time to see, see what would work.
Okay. I'm willing to give you time. But I, I want to be clear that that's where I stand on it, so I don't want you to come back and not know that. I didn't want more, more units there, so.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next discussion item. It's a discussion about how other cities along the Wasatch Front address the issue of automobiles being parked in the front yards of properties within single-family residential zoning districts, presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, council. This has been an interesting one. I always enjoy researching the city's code, as well as how other cities do things. It's always an educational opportunity for me. I was asked by the city council to look into how other cities deal with parking in the front yard. Are you ready? Could you hit the click share for me? I'm lost without my slides. Okay, so in looking at this issue, I first wanted to dive into our, our city code and see if our code actually has any language about parking in the front yard. And the first thing I wanted to do is, I, I put together this little graphic just to show how we define front yards, side yards, and rear yards. A front yard is defined by everything from the front plane of the house to the street. A rear yard is defined by everything from the rear plane of the house to the rear property line, and the side yards are those little pockets that rest immediately adjacent to the sides of the home. So the front yard and the rear yard are considerably larger than the side yards. I did find some language in the code regarding vehicles. In Tuilla City Code eight dash four dash three definition, I found some language that defines an inoperable motor vehicle, and what qualifies for, as an inoperable motor vehicle. That is vehicle that is not mechanically functioning for a period of thirty days without proof of ongoing restoration. That's always a fun one to try to prove, by the way. Tuilla City Code eight dash four dash three definitions defines a nuisance to include junked, wrecked, abandoned, or inoperable motor vehicles. And so if a vehicle is determined to be junked, wrecked, abandoned, or inoperable for a period longer than thirty days, the Tuilla City Code Enforcement Department can require the removal of the vehicle. But it has to be qualified as an inoperable vehicle in order for us to enforce that. What about operable and functional vehicles? Can they be parked in the front yard? According to our code, yes. I was not able to find any language that prohibits the parking of operable vehicles in the front yard. We do have some language in Tuilla City Code seven dash four dash four, number of parking spaces, that specifies two parking spaces per dwelling unit in single-family zones. We do have some language about parking location. This language restricts where you can park... where you can park a recreational vehicle, boat, trailer, or motorhome, but does not restrict where you can park a vehicle, a truck, or a van that is in operating condition. And then we have Tooele City Code 7-4-4, access requirements, which acts, or restricts drive approach width, number of drive approaches, and approach location, but does not restrict parking of vehicles in the front yard. So, that's the current condition of our codes. Do other cities restrict the parking of operable vehicles in the front yards of residential properties? Yes, they do. A lot of them. I chose five of them just to present to the council for your information tonight. Um, the first one was Salt Lake City, our capital city. They do prohibit parking in the front yard and on the corner of a side yard, uh, excuse me, a corner side yard. So, if you're corner lot, you can't park your cars on that side yard that faces the street in Salt Lake City. Parking spaces may not be used for recreational vehicle parking. I found that one to be interesting. Number three prohibits the paving in gravel or concrete, any portion of the front and side yards for vehicle parking. Number four prohibits parking on the park strip. Number five requires all parking to be on hard surface. So, that's Salt Lake City's parking requirements for front yards. Clinton City, up by Ogden, prohibits parking in the front yard, limits parking only to driveways leading to garages, and requires all parking areas to be paved. They're pretty straightforward and pretty simple. Midvale City requires parking in the side and rear yards to be paved with concrete, asphalt, pavers, or gravel, and to maintain weeds. It prohibits parking in other side yard and in the front yard, and prohibits parking on landscaping areas. South Salt Lake City prohibits parking in front yards or in landscaped areas, and requires all vehicles to be parked on asphalt or concrete surfaces. And then Bountiful City, like the others, prohibits parking in the front yard and on the street-side corner, and prohibits the parking of trailers and vehicles on the lawn, parking strip, or any other non-paved surface. And I worked for Riverton City for 14 years, and Riverton City did not have a parking ordinance for vehicles in the front yard. However, they had a landscaping requirement. So, your land, your front yard had to be landscaped in Riverton City, and the way that we enforced the parking issues when they arose was we used the landscaping requirement. Automobile parking cannot displace required parking. So, parking was enforced through this particular means. Um, this one would be a very difficult one to consider for Tooele. Um, a lot of people do not landscape their front yards, and this would be a very significant ordinance requirement for many property owners. So, just for, just for fun, I threw together a, a possible ordinance amendment, just to show, give the council some ideas if they wanted to even consider this. Uh, in Tooele City Code 7-4-7, parking location, we already have language regarding where you can park recreational vehicles in single-family residential zones. Uh, I just propose striking that and reworking that and rewarding the language to read, "Vehicle parking, including all recreational vehicles and associated trailers, is permitted in the side and rear yards, shall be improved with concrete, asphalt, concrete, pavers, or gravel. Parking area surfaced with concrete, pavers, or gravel shall be maintained to prevent weed growth in these areas. With the exception of the driveway and approved side yard parking, no other portion of the front or side yard shall be surfaced or used for parking. And parking shall not at any time occur on any landscaped area." One of the problems I came across in my mind after I wrote this was, there are many property owners that automatically pave from their driveway to the side of the property line, and they use that for parking. Then they don't do, they don't pave the rest of their front yard. This ordinance would come into conflict with that, create some issues there. But that's just a sample. There are other things that could be done if the city council were, were desirous to go, go down that path. Um, another possible ordinance to consider is if residents desire front yard parking, perhaps an ordinance requiring the parking areas to be paved for groundwater protection. A lot of people park the cars on landscaped areas. Cars leak oil, antifreeze, and other fluids that could end up permeating into the groundwater in time. So, if front yard parking is where we want to go, maybe we want to consider an ordinance that would require them to put some kind of paving down to prevent that. So, in short, in my research, pretty much if they're, if you're going to prohibit parking in the front yard, you prohibit parking in the front yard. There really isn't a, a happy medium or a, or a way to negotiate that. Either parking is permitted or it's not. But, uh, that's how many of the cities do it. They just outrightly prohibit it.
So, when that ordinance you wrote, it said something about approved side yard parking? How would it be approved? Like, do you, so my parents live on a corner lot. They have a driveway under their carport, and then they paved to the, the sidewalk. There's a little basketball court there, but will park there sometimes as well. Would that be appropriate? Is that approved side parking, or?
Under this ordinance, the way I just kind of wrote that up, that would create an issue. Because going back to that, that graphic that I showed you, let me go all the way back here. You'll see that the front yard is actually, you know, next to that driveway. That's, a lot of people consider that their side yard, but that's actually the front yard. And so, if they were to pave that and park cars in there, that would be in conflict with the, with the sample ordinance that I presented to you.
See, that's my concern is, to me, that parking's okay, right? That, it doesn't affect people. But then I drive down certain areas, and they have cars parked along their entire front yard, and, you know, 10, 12 cars. And so, I guess balancing that is the challenge, and I don't know how you do that.
It, it could be written in a way, we could put language in there that would kind of support that. Um, and ordinance can be written any way you want. Just it depends on if that's a fight you want to take up.
Right.
I know there are some people who have, um, um, it's like a horseshoe in the front yard, and they have their garage right here. But you can drive in and go all the way around and come out the other side. Um, that would basically be prohibited, then, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because those are usually in the front yard. Exactly.
And, um, so that, I mean, I, I know you've seen those, those homes like that as well.
But they're usually paved.
Yeah, yeah. That part is usually paved. But, but it is in the, it is in the front yard.
That's where you'd have to come in, I think, is, you'd have to have some specifics, but definitely parking areas would have to be, what you said, gravel paved, so forth, concrete, whatever. But there's got to be some allowances for that. I mean, there, look at our town. There, you have that all over the place. It's already concrete or gravel, and they're parking their RV next to it, or two RVs next to their house close to the property line, or, or whatever. I mean, if we, if we opened up a real strict building, then we'd have maybe a little bit of backlash, I think.
But would you want somebody to be able to pave their whole front yard and just park there?
No, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea, either. So, so that's where you got to come up with the language.
Yeah, can we find a happy medium?
Satisfy both of that.
We, we could, we could look at something like, I mean, we do have ordinances in place right now that, for all new homes, they can only put sod in 50% of their front yard and so forth. Perhaps you have something in there that says only 50% of your front yard can be utilized for parking, and then leave it up to the resident to decide how much of their, which part of their front yard they're going to use for parking. Um, that may be an option to consider.
50% is a lot.
And I'm, I, I'm just, it's, it's concerning, because I, I know we need this. I know we do. Um, and I'm looking at how the other cities, municipalities are doing it. But for us, um, here in Tooele, because we haven't done it this way for so long, 99%, if not 100% of the ones that are already doing it, that have already done some of the, what we're saying you shouldn't do, it seems that they may have to be grandfathered, or we have to give them a certain amount of time to fix it. Because, um, because I know we all know, there's people that are parking in their side yard with their motorhomes or whatever, and they're not on cement. And, you know, it's just on regu, and in today's times, that's going to cost a lot of money. Um, because I know when I poured my, um, RV pad, that was probably 10, 15 years ago, and that was several grand at that time. And now cement is a lot higher than it was then. So, we would be putting a, a major burden on, on a lot of people. Because every street you go down in Tooele, there's a motorhome or a boat or something.
But to Andrew's point, too, it is a little bit of a safety issue with leaking fluids and such into the groundwater.
I think it's a fire issue, too. Some of these houses I've seen, they have so many cars in the front yard. I don't know if the fire department could get to their house safely, too. So, and it's more common than I thought. So, I just, as I drive around, I start to look, and I'm like, holy cow, there's cars everywhere, it seems like, so.
Isn't most of our concern, though, is the front yard parking? We have 12 cars across from fence to fence, and, and some people have that many people driving out of there, but that's, it does look bad.
We could also look at redefining how we define yards.
Side and front?
Yeah. I mean, that's something else. I mean...
I do think it's sometimes a little bit different on a corner, also, because the corner is, I think I would consider the side yard up on that one side of a corner.
Yeah. And corner side yards are a lot larger, too. They have a lot more space.
Yeah. Okay. I like the idea of a percentage of the front yard, or I would say side yard, because I agree with you. To me, that's more side yard than front yard. But it, I don't like to put our code enforcement in a position where they have to-
Pick and choose.
Pick and choose, and it's, can they actually enforce the law that we tried to pass, right? So, trying to take all that into consideration and, yeah. But I like the percentage idea. Maybe not 50%, but anyways, yeah. Hopefully that, is that enough discussion to...
If you'd like me to continue to move forward with this, I'm happy to do so.
I guess that's the ultimate question. Do we want to move forward, or?
Oh, absolutely. I've, I've talked to residents that have concerns, particularly near Skyline Drive and Seventh Street. There's a, a concerned resident there that has talked to me. I've talked to Chief Day regarding that. Also, um, you know, I've noticed many yards that have multiple vehicles. That's my concern. Not, not so much having, you know, preventing people from parking, parking their IV, RVs on the side yard, um, but just the, the nuisance of having multiple vehicles on the front yard. It, it needs to be regulated. Now, that's my concern.
I'm happy to continue to work on this if you'd like me to.
I think if you take some of the ideas, and then we'll, we can bring it to another work meeting, and if you don't like it then...
Yeah, just got to make it something that's not impossible to enforce. I mean, that's, so you got to be creative, I guess.
I, I think specifics, like maybe the number of cars, or, or maybe the amount of space, those are easily enforced. Uh, the ones where they're vague, yeah, they, they get difficult. So, we'd want to make sure we focus on very specific standards, like requiring the parking areas to be paved, or limiting the percentage of the front yard, or maybe the number of cars. You know, I can throw together a lot of ideas for you.
And then Dave's part of it, you know, about affording the cement. So, do we give them, if we make an ordinance, then do we give them two years to do it or something? I mean, as we, because...
You're right.
Well, one of the things that Midvale-
You put very much cement there, it's $10,000 pretty easily, so.
Midvale City provided a wide range of materials: concrete, asphalt, pavers, gravel.
And then that's more affordable.
Yeah, there's some other things that could be written in there to-
And I, and again, I'm just thinking outside the box. In today's time, um, because of the, the cost of homes, more and more kids are moving back home. And when Johnny's been out on his own for eight, nine, 10 years, and Johnny has his toys, where's he going to put his toys? Normally, he's going to take his toys right back to mom and dad's. You know, and he got no other place to go. Um, and I know that is part of the problem as it is where we are today. Kids are moving back home because they can't afford to live on their own, and they're bringing their toys with them. And when you add those toys to mom and dad toys, that's a lot of toys.
My Johnny has a storage unit.
Say what?
My Johnny has a storage unit.
No, and I wasn't, and I wasn't calling your son Johnny.
It's not his name, so it's okay.
That, that's an interesting point, because we also have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
We do.
We permit accessory dwelling units in single-family homes, and they're required to provide one parking stall for that unit. That's, that's an int, that's a good point.
Yeah, it's just-
Yeah, it's a tough situation.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we'll see where you come up.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Throw some ideas together and bring them back to you. I'm happy to do that for you.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item six, a closed meeting. There's nothing to discuss in a closed meeting tonight, so we will adjourn at 6:35 PM and reconvene at 7:00 PM for our business meeting.